Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Worcester City Council. This is Monday, April 17th. Get your tax and returns in no later than tomorrow. We're now on Council Chambers Live, and it's being streamed on YouTube as well after 7:30 PM. Our next meeting will be Monday, May 1st, 2023. Mr. Paulo, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Cavan?
Here.
Ms. Knappik is absent.
Yes, she let me know she was on vacation.
Mr. Myers?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Mr. Sanders?
Here.
Mr. Ansel?
Here.
And Ms. Warden?
Here.
Well, we do have a quorum, and at this time I'd ask you to stand and join the City Council in deciding any pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at the moment, the agenda will remain as presented, but there might be alterations as we get into this. Next thing I would ask is approval of the minutes of April 3rd.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Warden, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers, all in favor of approving the minutes of April 3rd, 2023? Please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The minutes have been approved. Good evening, Mayor. I don't know how you top this. I don't know how you top the presentation at the Finance Committee, but I'll let you try.
Thank you, President Biden-Dyke. I appreciate it. Yes, I want to start out by saying thank you to Joel Montgomery for his detailed city operations report, and Andre Dordia for his first quarter of 2023 city financial update this evening. Nice job, gentlemen, on both. We are very grateful for our community we live in and the people who work for our city that help keep it running. It's a top-notch community. I'm sure most people have heard the report by the Wall Street Journal that Gojo Industries is seeing if someone might be interested in buying the company. Gojo has been and continues to be a wonderful corporate partner in the city of Worcester. They have breathed new life into and remodeled the old Rubbermaid Building in our community. They have constructed a state-of-the-art manufacturing process for Purell, making Worcester the largest manufacturing site of this product in the world. They have reinstalled a rail spur off the main line to receive raw materials they need and potentially ship their finished products through the country. I'm hoping that they will continue operations in our city, but if the opportunity arises, they may choose that course. I am confident that if someone should buy the company, the Worcester operation is such a good facility that I have a hard time believing that it would not continue as a manufacturer. We wish Gojo the best as they move forward and look forward to the continuation of operations of their Worcester plant. Other happenings in our city, Meyer Express gas station is slated to open this Thursday, April 20th, and their new grocery store on May 16th. Also, the new Mariola Italian restaurant beside Muddy's is slated to open on May 24th. Just out today, summer registration is now open in our recreation programs. Check it out if you want and your family want to get active. Go to recreation@wusteroh.com for all that information. Also, check out our city spring newsletter and share your thoughts on the Worcester Comprehensive Plan Community Survey found at our worsteroh.com website under news. We want and need your input on the comprehensive plan especially. So with that, President Biden-Dyke, that's everything I have for you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
We do have a petition, which is a liquor license, which if you would please, Mr. Paulo, read.
Sure. From the Ohio Division of Liquor Control for Bell Stores, Inc., doing business as Bell Stores, number 35, 220 South Columbus Avenue, Worcester, Ohio, 44691.
And I'll just refresh your recollection, we have three options. We can ask for a hearing here in Worcester. We can ask for a hearing down in Columbus, or we can waive a hearing. What's your pleasure, Council?
Motion to waive hearing, Mr. President.
Motion to waive hearing by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
I heard Mr. Cavan first. Mr. Cavan seconded. Would you please call the roll on the motion to waive having a hearing?
Mr. Cavan?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Ansel?
Yes.
And Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Paulo, if you would be so kind, please contact the Department of Liquor Control and let them know we've waived the hearing.
And this is the new facility that's being built, South Columbus?
That brings us to committee reports. We had a Finance Committee meeting that was chaired by Mr. Sanders. Would you like to give a brief synopsis of what transpired?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, basically, what we had is we had a presentation from the city finance department related to our first quarter finances. Everything currently is looking very good, and thank you to the city and the finance people for the hard work that they do. The second part of the meeting that we had was a presentation from Mr. Montgomery related to 22 operations update, which again was extensive in terms of the amount of data that we had this evening to see. Again, there's a lot of positive programs and a lot of positive things going on in the community right now, and I want to thank him and his office for the work that they did on the presentation. And that's all I have.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Sanders.
Mr. Sanders, I believe both those reports will be on the city website, if not already, very soon, so that the public can view those if they weren't able to attend this evening's meeting, so.
Yes, they will. Thank you very much.
Now, we have two public hearings scheduled. Both will be chaired by Mr. Reynolds. First one deals with East Vine Street rezoning. Mr. Reynolds, I turn the floor over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first one, it deals with a rezoning request for the East Vine Street property located at the south side of East Vine Street, west of Buckeye and east of Spruce with parcel number 64-01314, 64-01313, 64-01423, and 64-00997. These properties are currently zoned RT, and the request is to change the zoning to I-3. RT is traditional residential. I-3 is urban industrial. Is there anyone here? We'll go first with those in favor and then those opposed. So I'm going to ask first for anyone here to speak in favor of the proposed rezoning, and for everyone, we'll ask three things. We'd ask you to identify yourself by name and by address, and then affirm to tell the truth. So, Mr. Long, you're up first.
Good evening, members of Council. My name is Matthew Long, and I'm here tonight on behalf of KLML, the property owner. You may not recognize that name, but you probably recognize the operating entity tied to it, Worcester Glass Company. It's one of several companies or entities that holds the various real estate associated with that local community business. This relates not necessarily to what's the visible portion of Worcester Glass, but the less-so-visible warehouse and fabrication facility located in the triangle at the base of South Market Street between Madison and Spruce Street. For those of you familiar with the neighborhood and especially the history of the neighborhood, a decade-plus ago, it was not a pretty place. It was a site of some of the worst light. I watched Joel's report earlier, and a decade ago, a lot of the houses that you would have seen would have been in this specific neighborhood. We undertook a significant effort that's taken most of that last decade to acquire that light, one foreclosure, one condemnation at a time. And at this point, we were able to salvage several of those houses on the south side of Leroy Court that are single-family residential, but mostly that area between Vine Street and Leroy Court. These houses were well beyond the state where any reasonable repair could be undertaken. During that course of time, the houses were raised and now assembled into the block of contiguous land that you see as the subject of today's application. I can tell you that there's no immediate plans for expansion in this neighborhood, although this would be the first step along the path to assure that any future Worcester Glass expansion is able to continue to take place in Worcester and very particularly adjacent to downtown and its other facilities. The request here is also consistent with one that was asked of Council just a couple of years before the pandemic. As part of the last expansion effort, you approved the zoning map amendment just adjacent to this that moved additional land from the RT into the I-3 district to support that expansion. This move from the RT to the I-3 is very consistent with the comprehensive plan. It provides an orderly transition from residential to commercial. I think of I-3 and RT as being sisters of each other. They're meant to be adjacent to each other, and they're meant to protect and facilitate both in an orderly manner. And of course, any future actual plans would have to go back before all of the appropriate boards and commissions as part of an orderly zoning entitlement process. This application comes with both the recommendation of Planning Commission and staff, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have now or later as appropriate.
Mr. Long, I've got just a few. I know that on the furthest east end of this, there was a house very recently that I think it's, the straw is still there. It's so freshly demolished. I think at one point, there were total of three houses there?
Four. The fourth, which you're probably not thinking of, was the former church, the Second Baptist Church, which is adjacent to the Tann Warehouse Building located on the back of that lot. So that actually moved when the first was being raised, and actually, that building, interestingly, was put into cold storage at an adjacent warehouse facility in the hopes that it could be later reassembled.
Familiar with that effort. Thank you for doing that. Was there any thought towards attempting to rebuild a new residential on those sites?
Yeah, you know, the RT district and downtown residential development will find no bigger champion than myself personally and our family. In this instance, that triangle really isn't well-suited for residential development. The expansion of residential development in that area would frankly just not be an attractive place to develop. The existing residential we have there really is not all that attractive. Frankly, we offer it through local social service agencies as transitional housing, mainly because the price is right and not because the neighborhood is attractive.
Anyone else with questions, Mr. Long? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else present to speak in favor of the proposed rezoning while we work on the microphones? I think we just need to speak loudly when you talk.
No, it's not now.
It's working now.
Okay, good. All right. Anyone here to speak against the proposed rezoning? Anything from Council?
I would like to just say, although historically I am not in favor of transitioning RT to I-3, but I do know the Long family. I do know the history that they have in that area, and they have made great waves and good progress. Usually, I'm not in favor of that, but in this instance, I would say I am, but only because I know what's happened with that. But I would prefer to see the RT not be changed to I-3 in any of the other areas, but for this one, I do know that the company's been in business a long time. They do a good job, and I do know that the Long family does have the interest of the area in mind. So, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I too am in favor of the change. It's bordered on two sides already by I-3. The Worcester Glass Company has been a part of our downtown community for many, many years and a great partner to the city, and we appreciate having them in our community.
Anyone else? And, Mr. Long, you've got an opportunity to respond further if you feel the need now, but I don't know that there's any need to.
Thank you for those kind words.
With that, we'll consider this first public hearing closed.
All right. The public hearing on the East Vine Street rezoning has concluded and will be reflected in the council minutes. That brings us to the public hearing regarding the Melrose Drive rezoning and annexation. It too will be chaired by Mr. Reynolds, and I turn the floor back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is for 32.24 acres located on Melrose Drive that is currently outside the city limits, and we are going to have a dual-purpose public hearing, first on, well, I shouldn't say first, but once on the issue of annexation, which is being brought into the city, the second on the zoning classification, and the proposed zoning classification is R-2. And we'll not deal with those separately. We'll just have the public hearing on both topics. So first, I would ask, is there anyone here prepared to speak in favor of the proposed annexation and zoning? And again, same ground rules apply.
Good evening, Council members. My name's Andrew Brower. I'm at 121 North Market Street, Worcester, Ohio. I affirm to tell the truth. I'm here on behalf of the proposed developer for this site, Schlabal Builders. It's a builder and developer primarily located in Millersburg, Ohio, Holmes County. The proposed use for this parcel will be a residential subdivision. Right now, the plan is to have 68 buildable lots. They anticipate that happening in two phases. The first phase will be approximately 35 lots. Second phase will be 33 lots. Believe the parcel is currently located in Wayne Township. We believe annexing it into the city will help the development, and also the acreage to the south, to the west, and even a couple of lots accepted out to the north are already in the city. Likewise, the zoning in that area is R-2 to the south and R-2 to the west across Melrose Drive and in the current residential subdivisions located there. That's about all I have, but happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anyone have questions for Mr. Brower? Thank you, Mr. Brower.
Thank you, Council.
Anyone else present here to speak in favor of the proposed annexation and zoning? Mr. Malley?
Hello, good evening. Jonathan Malley. I affirm to tell the truth. Address, 1864 Christmas Run Boulevard. Work address, 538 North Market Street, Worcester, Ohio, both locations. Just to share, as agent for the petitioner, wanted to offer a couple of words. Mr. Brower covered most everything that I was going to touch on, but I just wanted to share that we started this conversation back in December as Mr. Brower's team was exploring options. And this annexation in particular is being requested under 709022. We have previously brought legislation before Council to seek permission to enter into an agreement with the Wayne Township trustees to help expedite the annexation process in terms of the county's process, which would normally add another 60 to 90 days onto this. The reason for that is that being that we're here in April with the opportunity to consider annexation, this creates a window for the developer to possibly start work as early as this year and help to address some of the housing concerns that we've talked about so much in the last couple of years. So in any event, just wanted to, again, explain the city's role with that as being agent for petitioner and to thank everybody for their interest and happy to answer any questions on that end. Thank you.
Mr. Malley, so just looking through the pact that we received, so, and again, being a little bit repetitive of what you said, but this is the subject of an agreement with the Wayne Township trustees who have signed off on the annexation, and Wayne County Commissioners have approved the annexation.
Yes, sir.
Anyone have questions for Mr. Malley?
Thank you.
With regards to the zoning, what happened, can you tell us what happened to Planning Commission?
So with that, Planning Commission had recommended approval for that, R-2 zoning, again, having the compatibility with the R-2 to the immediate south and R-2 being located to the immediate west. Both from a planning standpoint and also from the developer's standpoint, R-2 was the most compatible. It provides the same protections that is in place for all the city property that it would currently touch.
Mr. Ansel?
Well, I'm particularly impressed with the initiative and the collaborative approach and the, you know, agreements that are in place in recognizing that Schlabal Builders is a very reputable competitively-priced builder would be a welcome addition to our community. I know they've done some spot builds here, but nothing of this magnitude, so I'm familiar with them in surrounding areas and see their subdivisions, and they're very credible, very conscientious, and great stewards of land use, so it's a pretty exciting initiative.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Long. Anyone else prepared to speak in favor of the proposed annexation and zoning? Okay, let's go to the other side then. Is anyone here prepared to speak against either the zoning or annexation? We'll consider this public hearing closed as well. Thank you all.
All right. A public hearing with regard to the Melrose Drive rezoning and annexation has been held, and the minutes will be reflected in our minutes. That turns, we turn to unfinished business. First matter is second reading of ordinance number 2023, day 09. If you would, Mr. Paulo, please read the title.
Ordinance number 202309, an ordinance amending Part 11 zoning of the codified ordinances of the city of Worcester, Ohio to rezone land to I-3 urban industrial for property located on East Vine Street.
And once again, we turn the floor over, or I turn the floor over to you, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I'd move to table this.
Not this one.
Not this one?
Not this one.
Next.
I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself. Yes, this is the one, sorry, East Vine Street. This is our second reading. We've had testimony tonight at the public hearing. We had our first reading two weeks ago, and I've had no pushback or response. I was impressed with the level of detail that Mr. Long and his group have gone into in putting this piece together. Unless there's any discussion with the Council, I'd move to suspend the rules and put this on third and final reading.
All right. Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Reynolds. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
And Cavan?
I have a question. Is three readings required for a zoning change?
No.
No?
So you can suspend the rules and move it to, you can't do it, you can't pass it with immediate enactment or what we used to call emergency. And the reason for that is it has to have 30 days as a time period for which someone can appeal.
Okay.
So that's why.
All right. Thank you.
Good question.
Yes.
So since the rules have been suspended, Mr. Reynolds, do you have another ordinance? Do you have another motion for us?
I do, Mr. President. I'd move that we adopt ordinance number 2023-09.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Reynolds. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. Any further discussion? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
And Cavan?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2023, day 09 passes. I have to note that that's probably the best use for this, and two, it seems to me, Mr. Long, when you're actually advocating for yourself, that you speak a lot less. Is that because you're giving free legal work?
No, I can't afford myself.
I figured that. Well, I know you'll do well with that property, whatever your plans are in the future. That brings us to ordinance number 2023-10. This will be presented by Mr. Reynolds. It's on second reading. Before we get to you, Mr. Reynolds, I will ask Mr. Paulo to please read the title.
Ordinance number 2023-10, an ordinance to zone annexed land as R-2, single-family residential for territory located on the east side of Melrose Drive and contiguous to the corporation limits pursuant to Section 1107.04 of the Worcester Codified Ordnances.
Mr. Reynolds, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, I want to move to table this. We have a procedural snafu here that's easily fixed. We can't vote on the rezoning of this or the zoning of this until we've voted on the annexation, and the annexation is on first reading. So with that in mind, I would like to very briefly table ordinance number 2023-10 and make that motion.
Motion to table the ordinance, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sanders. Would you please call the roll on the motion to table?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
And Cavan?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2023, day 10 has been tabled. I should point out that if it's not brought off the table within a year, it will expire, but I don't think that's going to happen in this case. That brings us to new business, ordinance number 2023, day 16. Again, Mr. Reynolds will present it. It is scheduled for three readings. Before I get back to you, Mr. Reynolds, Mr. Paulo, would you please read the title?
Ordinance number 2023-16, an ordinance accepting application for the annexation of territory located on Melrose Drive and contiguous to the corporation limits.
Mr. Reynolds, the floor is yours.
Yes, Mr. Biden-Dyke. We had the public hearing on this tonight. We had testimony about the intended use of this, the housing units and quality, and Mr. Ansel provided some background on the developer, and I would move to suspend the rules and put this on third and final reading.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Reynolds, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended. Mr. Reynolds, do you have another motion?
I do, Mr. President. I would move for the adoption of ordinance number 2023-16.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Reynolds, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Any discussion? I should point out, we did this, I think it was last July, we had a piece of property where it was what they called fast-tracked under the Ohio Revised Code. And as in this case, there was an agreement with all the parties, the township and the commissioners and the city, so.
Normally, I'm kind of hesitant to fast, to push these along when, you know, there might be an opportunity for the public to weigh in and get back to us, but we've already had first reading on the zoning part of this. And Mr. Stout is here and the weather's breaking and he's probably ready to push dirt tomorrow. So, I think we ought to let him have at it.
If there's no further discussion, Mr. Apollo, would you please call the roll?
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And Myers?
Ordinance number 2023 day 16 passes. Mr. Brower and I had one down in Mount Eaton, so he's getting good at this. And I know Mr. Stout has a lot of equipment that needs to knock the rust off sitting over the winter, so good luck with that. That brings us to resolution number 2023-27. It'll be presented by Mr. Ansel. It is budgeted, so will not require suspension of the rules. Does require me to look to Mr. Apollo and ask her to please read the title.
Resolution number 2023-27, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise for bids and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the replacement of the water line on Henry Street and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours, sir.
Yes, this project is budgeted and has been allocated funding for the improvement for, from the water fund budget. It's to authorize for the bidding of the contract to the lowest bidder for the replacement of the water line on Henry Street from Grant to Walnut. This project involves the replacement of 407 linear feet of four-inch cast water line with a history of repairs and breaks. The replacement will be eight-inch ductile iron pipe, much improved with double capacity. Includes the replacement of six water services and one hydrant. All of the engineering and design, construction and administration and inspection will be handled in-house by our engineering staff. Mr. Kobelarsik is here this evening, but this was nothing more than a budgeted and scheduled replacement of an aging four-inch line. And while suspension is not necessary based on the current situation within the contractor's market, the sooner the better to put this out to bid. So, hopefully, since this is budgeted and anticipated, we can suspend the rules of council and move to adopt the resolution 2327. Oh, yeah, motion to adopt.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ansel.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kevin. Any further discussion? This is one of the few chances remaining to inquire with Mr. Kobelarsik because rumor has it, he will not be here by the end of the year and probably might not be here by the time we come back from summer hiatus.
Correct.
Well, seeing nothing further, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
And Kevin?
Yes.
Ordinance, resolution number 2023 day 27 passes. We'll turn our attention to resolution number 2023-28. They'll be presented again by Mr. Ansel. It too is budgeted, will not require suspension of the rules. Mr. Apollo, would you please read the title?
Resolution number 2023-28, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the construction of a sanitary sewer from the intersection of Christmas Run and Brookside to Oldman and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours.
Yes, this is really an exciting initiative to improve the infrastructure on the northwest side of town. It is a budgeted and planned sewer project expansion that's much required. It is in our budget. It has been approved for 2023, 2024 expenditure. Total cost of $1.7 million. This is particularly interesting because it is TIF-funded, the tax incremental financing option that we've exercised. So, this will be paid by the developer over a 20-year development period. So, this request is nothing more than procedural protocol for advertisement of bid and solicitation with contract to the lowest bidder for the construction of the sanitary sewer from the intersection of Christmas Run and Brookside to Oldman. And actually, with the calculation here, it's pretty extensive. It's almost a mile in length. It's 5,150 linear feet of eight-inch sewer pipe with 17 manholes and 12 PVC additional accounts for additional flows for the continued development of the TIF project. So, this engineering will be coordinated internally through our engineering department, the Design Construction Administration. In part of Mr. Montgomery's presentation this evening highlighted the internal savings of over a million dollars that our own interior, or internal engineering department internalizes those costs, so we don't have to incur those costs to the taxpayers. So, kudos to the engineering team. And again, while suspension isn't necessary, time is of the essence and I would like to go ahead this evening and motion to adopt this piece of legislation.
All right, motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Any further discussion? I think this is an exciting project and I'm glad the city has adopted some creative ways to help developers and this is one of the first TIF projects, I think, here in the city of Worcester.
I have a question, if I could, please. Mr. Kobelarsik, will there be any assessments associated with this for the residents in those neighborhoods?
No, there will not.
Thank you.
The TIF's paying for it.
The TIF pays for even the existing? Okay, great. Thank you.
Seeing nothing further, Mr. Apollo, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
And Ansel?
Yes.
Resolution number 2023 day 28 passes. We'll look at resolution number 2023 day 29. It too is presented by Mr. Ansel and like the previous three, or two resolutions, it's budgeted, will not require suspension of the rules. Mr. Apollo, would you please read the title?
Resolution number 2023-29, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise for bids and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the placement of a storm sewer on Beaver Street and allowing for immediate enactment.
You're spending a lot of money tonight there, Mr. Ansel.
Well, I was just going to highlight to emphasize your point. Mr. Kobelarsik is going out with a bang. He's getting things done before he does go right off into his retirement, so, great job, Roger. It's been a busy year already with capital improvements and infrastructure improvements. This is really a unique initiative and we certainly all understand why this is unique and we'll talk about that, but it is budgeted. We have allocated $225,000 from our storm sewer fund in escrow for these type of projects. But this is to advertise for bids, to solicit the contractors to do the work for the storm sewer on Beaver Street from the Worcester Brush Parking Lot south to Freelandor Road. That, it's kind of a unique step down. There's 165 feet of 12-inch linear feet, 146 linear feet of 15-inch, 271 linear feet of 18-inch and 85 linear feet of 21-inch and 512 linear feet of 24-inch reinforced concrete and polypropylene storm sewer pipe. Six sewer manholes and seven curb inlets will be added to this. But instead of this water runoff going through our water treatment facility, it will go directly into the Apple Creek, so it'll take that burden off the water processing in our wastewater treatment facility, which will give that processing plant additional capacity. So, brilliant move. It makes logical and eco-friendly sense to operate this way and we've accrued the funds to be able to do that. So, that being noted, this evening, I'm motion to adopt the resolution for the storm sewer upgrade, resolution 23, 2023-29.
All right, motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Any further discussion? Mr. Apollo, would you please call the roll?
Kevin?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
And Reynolds?
Yes.
Resolution number 2023 day 29 passes. Final piece of legislation? No, it isn't. We'll have another one after this. Caught myself. It's not in my script, I had to go from memory. Resolution number 2023-30 will be presented by Ms. Warden. It's slated for three readings. Mr. Apollo, would you please call, or please read the title?
Resolution number 2023-30, a resolution declaring it necessary to improve a portion of the streetscape on Liberty Street and to determine assessments for affected property owners and allowing for immediate enactment.
Ms. Warden, the floor is all yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, as, as Mr. Apollo said, this is a request to declare necessity to improve streetscape along Liberty Street from PNC Bank all the way over to Walnut Street and then south along Walnut Street to the north side of the alley. This is $302,000, or I'm sorry, $302,000 will come from the capital improvement fund and another $47,000, I'm sorry, $47,760 will come from assessments to the property owners in that area. This will hopefully take place in 2024, pending approval by my colleagues on council. And the assessments will take place in 15 annual installments, which is a long-established method of paying back the city for these improvements. I asked Mr. Montgomery prior to the meeting and apparently the existing streetscape took place in the 1990s, I believe, so it's long overdue for some improvements. I know I'm in that area quite frequently and especially the sidewalks, the bricks are uneven and in some areas perhaps even a little dangerous. So, it'll be nice to see this take place in our downtown. Mr. Kobelarsik again is here. If he has, if anyone has any questions for him about this project, but I do plan to move this forward to third reading this evening.
Okay. Is a portion of this there or on Liberty where it runs into Walnut Street?
Correct, yes, from the PNC Drive where we stopped the last section of streetscape down to Matso's and then down along Walnut Street.
Right, yeah.
On the west side of Matso's.
I frequently walk on that side and there between Matso's and the Spoon in particular can be a little hazardous because those bricks do not hold up very well. Something to be said for fire-baked brick. Just, that's my opinion. As Dennis Miller would say, I might be wrong, but I'm kind of disappointed that after 30 years there might be some evenness, but these bricks are actually deteriorating. I assume if there's anyone that bought a brick that has their name in there, those will be replaced at no cost to them.
Then I'll make a motion to place this on third and final reading.
All right, motion to suspend the rules by Ms. Warden, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sanders. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Kevin?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
And Reynolds?
Yes.
I look to you, Ms. Warden, for another motion.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Warden, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kevin. Any further questions, discussion? One of the few chances remaining to grill Mr. Kobelarsik.
I don't know if this is for Roger, but do we generally always have an assessment on this type of work downtown?
Correct, the last one.
Do we expect any pushback since these people were assessed the first time this happened and now we're going back to them? This is the same thing we've done on all the rest of the projects we've done downtown. It's about 13.6%, I think, is what we're assessing the rest of it.
Okay.
Good question.
And I did ask Mr. Kobelarsik, there are no remarkable improvements or changes to the streetscape? It's just an overall update to the materials, I suppose.
All right, Mr. Apollo, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Kevin?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
And Reynolds?
Yes.
Resolution number 2023 day 30 passes. And we do have Ms. Smith has signed up. Oh, yes, that's right. That's right. I'm waiting for someone to say, hey.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to bring ordinance number 2023-10 off the table.
All right, motion by Mr. Reynolds to bring, was that, ordinance 2023 day 10 off the table. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. Would you please call the roll on the motion to bring the ordinance 2023 day 10 off the table?
Kevin?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
And Reynolds?
Yes.
2023 day 10 ordinance will be brought off the table.[1666.49] Seeing it's being reintroduced, I think you need to read the title again.
All right, ordinance number 2023-10. An ordinance to zone annexed land as R2 single-family residential for territory located on the east side of Melrose Drive and contiguous to the corporation limits pursuant to Section 110704 of the Worcester Codified Ordinances.
Mr. Reynolds, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is our second reading, and we can conduct this now because we have just voted to annex this property. And coming in, we proposed zoning for this as R2. You've heard the presentation. It's been, the R2 zoning was recommended by the planning commission unanimously at their last meeting. And I would move to suspend the rules and put this on third and final reading.
All right, motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Reynolds, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. Ms. DePaula, would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Myers.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Ansel.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
And Cavan.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended. Mr. Reynolds, do you have another motion for us?
Yes, I'd move for the adoption of ordinance number 2023-10.
All right, motion to adopt by Mr. Reynolds, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Any further discussion? We've had a public hearing, had further, we've had discussion during the public hearing. Seeing nothing else.
That was the shortest R1 designation we've ever had. I mean, when it was annexed, it was annexed as R1, and now it's going to be R2.
Yes. For 15 minutes.
Yep.
Would you call, please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Myers.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Ansel.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
And Cavan.
Yes.
All right, resolution number, or ordinance number 2023-10 passes. Now we'll get back to the miscellaneous portion. And Ms. Smith, if you would, state your name and address. And we're interested in what you have to say.
My name is Linda Smith. I don't.
Please, the timer's not working, so I'll just put my hand up.
Okay. Okay, I, my name is Linda Smith. I live at 3108 Bayberry Cove. And I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the Worcester Severe Weather Shelter, which was at the Salvation Army. At the conclusion of the severe weather shelter season, which began December 1st, 1922, and ended in late March of this year, the shelter was open for a total of 76 nights. It served a total of 111 unduplicated individuals at a bargain price of $23,000. Our community solicitations generated approximately $26,000 donated by individuals, churches, social service agencies, and social and civic organizations throughout the county. On behalf of the Worcester Homeless Task Force, I want to thank all the donors. In addition, we thank the residents, local restaurants, and volunteers who provided, prepared, and served a hot meal for each of these 76 nights. This helped to offset greatly and enhance the program quality of the shelter and which would have otherwise, the expense would have been incurred by the project. Thirdly, we're especially thankful for the hospitality of the Salvation Army, not only for the inconvenience that they experienced in order to make the space available for us for such an extended period during their program year, but also for all the little favors they did to accommodate the needs of the guests during that time period. Due to the generous donations of our community neighbors this year, the Wayne County Housing Coalition was able to hire one 40-hour contract employee to serve as an on-call night manager as needed. And when the shelter was open for more than 40 hours, excuse me, per week, many of our local social service agencies' employees covered the remaining night shifts in addition to working their regular daytime hours at their respective agencies. Could I please finish this? I think it's important for the city to hear the rest of this report. In addition, each evening during the operation, three or more adult volunteers were present from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. to serve as hosts to greet and assist the guests and visit with them and tend to their needs as they settled in for the night. There were dozens of trained compassionate men and women on hand to be available as needed for that purpose. And early in the next morning, several times a week, there was a different dedicated group of volunteers ready to come to the Salvation Army from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. to tackle the mountain of blankets, sheets, and bedding needed to be washed, folded, and ready for use as soon as the temperature dipped again. Worcester is truly a very caring and dedicated community. Finally, I want to thank Wynne Jones, who stepped in to seamlessly coordinate all these various parts and pieces, tasks, and schedules that resulted in a pleasant experience for everyone involved, hour after hour, day after day. I want to thank Wynne very much for that dedication of her time. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. Okay, that brings us to council's portion. We'll start out with Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of things. First of all, I think a lot of you were there, some of us participating for the chamber and WDC candidate night last week. And there were a number of questions talking about the RT zoning district. And I asked, I did ask the administration for some numbers there. And I think Mr. Long's presentation tonight was kind of timely on that because I thought it was a little bit of an illustration of some of the issues we're facing. We've got about 1,200 units, I think, residential units in RT zoning district. And over the past 15 years, I think that's about right, which is how long the district's been in place, they've had 86 demolitions and three new constructions. And Mr. Long gave a little snapshot of just one little area of town where they've had several demolitions so far. I guess four houses, or maybe three houses and a church. And the houses on Leroy Court, if you've driven by there, and again, hats off to Mr. Long and the other owners of those properties. You know, they've obviously sunk some money and time into keeping those up. But I think with some of our older neighborhoods in the city, you're only going to extend the lives of those homes so long. And those ones on Leroy Court, I would say, obviously, the ones that Mr. Long had demolished or his group demolished are at the end of their useful lives. The ones on Leroy Court, you know, do they have another 20 years in them? Another 30 years? It's hard to say. There are areas, but I think we've got to look, and I think, hope that comprehensive plan is going to take a look at this. Of those 1,200 homes that are in the RT district, a good number of those over the next 50 years are going to cycle out of their useful life. And we've got to decide, you know, are we going to just open up more green space in the RT district? Are we going to come up with some type of plan for replacement? Because we get a lot of pushback as a city. And I think we've all heard this from, you know, that we're creeping too far north and east, that we're expanding too far into farmland, things like that. Well, some of that happens naturally. But also, some of that's happening because the southern end of the city is gradually emptying out a little bit. And maybe that's by design, maybe that's a good thing. But I guess, I think we should be conscious of that happening. And it's going to, I believe, based on the condition of the housing in some sections. And again, I don't mean to paint the whole RT district with a broad brush on this because there are certainly well-maintained homes. They're going to last a very long time. But there are also some neighborhoods with some homes that are not. And I think we need to foresee that in the next 10, 20 years, a lot of those homes are going to need to come down. And what's going to replace them? Because they're not great housing now. And the homes that Mr. Long was talking about probably weren't great houses either. But it was affordable housing for some people. So again, I think the lack of affordable housing in the community plays into this a little bit. So I would ask the administration to look into that as part of their review of the comprehensive plan. So that was number one. Sorry for going on, but we had a full night. It was last Wednesday, Thursday. The other thing that came up during that conversation, the question was asked, how can we get more involved and, you know, how are you going to communicate with the community? Well, the administration said, gave one means tonight, that's out there, that comprehensive plan survey. That is a great way for people to get involved and have their voice heard and that. So I would encourage everybody to do that. And probably the most important thing, and I know this is on a lot of people's minds, is our council president challenged the President of the United States to a push-up contest. And has the White House gotten back to you?
Not yet. When he heard it was Iron Mike, he decided not to take him on.
I just, I, will you keep us updated?
I will.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Sorry for going on.
That's all right. Ms. Warden?
I would just like to thank Mr. Dordia and Mr. Montgomery for your presentations tonight. It was especially nice to see, you know, once again, we've had a few presentations already this year from the administration. But it's nice to see the progress that the city's making on, you know, the many goals that we set for ourselves. So I appreciate those presentations. Thank you.
And Mr. Ansel, despite not being on the finance committee, certainly spent a lot of money this evening.
Well, and the finance presentation and the operational overview updates provided were very enlightening and reassuring to continue to have the superb financial performance that we're having as a city, to have the revenue stream continue at very high levels with tight expense control on behalf of the city. You know, for my many years being on the finance, that was the consistency year to year. We were over-budget in revenue receipts and under-budget in expenditures. And we all know managing budgets, that's the situation or the position you want to be in. So that has continued even through COVID. So remarkable performance in the activities and growth in the city, with particular focus toward the economic housing development and expansion situation. You can certainly sense the priority and the vision and the momentum that we're gaining in that arena with the annexation and the builders coming in and building a variety of different livable type of situations, anything from the trailers to condos, to apartments, to homes. So it certainly is a priority focus on behalf of the city. So keep up the good work, and thank you for that. And the financial performance, we're just very fortunate as a city overall.
Thank you. Mr. Myers. Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead. Mr. Sanders.
Again, I'd like to thank the administration for the financial information related to the first quarter, the presentation that they provided us, and also the operations. For the first quarter of this year, it's both were insightful. And to previous stated comments, you can see what we've, what we've, we're achieving goals and we're getting things done. So we appreciate that. The last thing I have is that, just to announce that we have a, on May 1st, at 6:30 p.m., we have another finance committee meeting, which at this point will be to discuss allocation of bed tax monies.
Okay. Mr. Myers.
Thank you, President Biden-Dyke. Along the lines of what Mr. Sanders said on the finance committee meeting, the discussion of the bed tax fund and economic development topic at the next committee meeting, the two areas of discussion that I'd like, that I've brought up that we'd like to discuss is what the city had recommended previously would be to utilize 100% of the bed tax for economic development. Traditionally, it's been about half into the general fund and half earmarked for economic development. And then the second part of that would be the use of those funds. How are they distributed and what are they used for? My, I think it's no surprise to those folks if you want counsel, and probably to everybody else, my recommendation, of course, in that discussion would be to restore full funding to the traditional partners as we have done in the last 15 or so years, and then discuss the use of the balance of those funds. So I look forward to having everybody's input. And I know that the city's actually been working on their strategic plan with Jonathan and the Economic Development Department. And they have a lot of information to share with us as well. I think working together, we can come to a very good resolution on that. I wanted to also say thank you for the report on the severe weather shelter. Appreciate the update on the statistics and what went on. And a great thanks to the many volunteers and others who make that program available.
And Mr. Cavan will give you the last word.
Thank you. Yes, it was a good presentation from administration. As far as the financial health of the city, it looks great. On another note, I would take exception with Mr. Reynolds. As far as the RT is concerned, the RT has worked wonderfully. No sense in chopping up single-family houses and forcing three or four families to live in them with no parking, no upkeep, out-of-town landlords. It don't work. It's proven. It does not work. The RT is the only way to fly with that, and the results speak for themselves. And I don't want to get into it too deep either, but as far as miscellaneous. But that's all I have. Thank you.
All right.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. President.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Ansel is there a second? Second by Mr. Myers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.